Hello Frank.
How are you?
I'm doing good, how are you?
Good, good.
I think everybody saw the early holiday for Labor Day today.
Good evening Mayor, council members.
Good evening, good evening.
Hi there.
The Attorney General.
Good evening Councilman Grego.
How are you?
Good, how are you Governor? Unfortunately, I can't see you because I'm wondering if you're showing off the new dining room furniture.
No.
Okay, you're in the office.
I'm in the office also known as my private prison.
That's right.
All the way from home.
Yeah, really.
Karen, where's all the CU memorabilia? I'm looking at you all to see if there's any CU stuff I can take.
I've got more than you can handle.
I found something for you, I'll bring it to your office.
Oh yeah.
Eli is the man.
No, I'm not.
You are, Councilman.
Now I have your lens that picture on.
You do, you do.
I mean, I'll post this story soon.
Okay. Well, I went to CSU, so, but I did some post-grad work in Boulder, but I got my degree at Fort Collins.
Okay, let's get rolling here. Okay, today is Tuesday, September the 1st, 2020, the time is now 6:00 PM. Regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Trinidad will now come to order, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. From which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Just anyone who is listening to the meeting tonight. If you want to, when it comes up to the petitions section, if you want to be recognized, either chat in prior to or let me know so that we can recognize you. If you do want to speak, you have five minutes to state your opinion. Council will not be making a counter-opinion of any sort during that time, we will just listen to your opinion or your concerns. So item one is roll call, could we have a roll call please?
DeBono?
Here.
Griggo? Grego? Yes. Hoboken? Here. Drew?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Please go.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda, does anyone in council have any changes to the agenda that they'd like to make?
No.
Okay, in that case, could I have a motion please?
移到
Could I have a second?
Second.
Could I call a vote please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego? Yes. Hoboken? Yes. Drew?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Please go.
Yes. Item three, policy items or staff reports, Mike, do you have anything under that item that you need to report on?
Nothing at this time Mayor.
Okay. Item four, petitions or communications are overwritten, is there anyone listening in that needs to be recognized? I don't see anyone, however, I do have a couple of items I want to read, I got a letter here from the school district number one. Says, Dear Mayor Grego and Trinidad City Council, at the August 4th, 2020 Trinidad City Council meeting, City Council approved Resolution Number 1573 authorizing expenditure in marijuana revenue. On behalf of the Trinidad School District Number One, I would like to thank the members of Trinidad City Council for approving the resolution, which includes a generous $25,000 donation to the district. The money will be used for enhancements to distance learning capabilities of our students. Distance learning will require IT infrastructure upgrades and student learning devices with gratitude, Bonnie Aaron, School District Number One Superintendent. And I think everyone probably has seen the letter from Dr. Epper from TSJC, I'm not going to read it, but I'll just read a small portion of it, it says, I would like to thank the City of Trinidad for its recent funding appropriation Trinidad State. We are sincerely grateful for your support during this challenging time. I would also like to provide an update on how we are responding to COVID-19 and share some details on how the college is using the city funds to support student health and safety as well, as bring your attention to some of the educational impacts that COVID-19 is having. And of course, she gives a detail of a lot of different things. The one thing I want to recognize from her letter though, is that, you know, she is very concerned about, you know, the students in the county have participated for years in the concurrent enrollment, and there is an impact that it's having not only on the college but on the students from the schools as well, because they're able to do some studies at the college level while they're attending high school and a lot of times they are graduating sometimes, you know, with a degree at the end of their senior year. So she is struggling with that and what I'd like to do tonight is to recommend that myself and Mike and Ms. Grego meet with her and see what concerns, major concerns that she has, and see if we can come up with a path forward for her so that she can do something, she's asking for some help. So if council doesn't have any issues with that, I'd like to be able to do that. Does council have any concerns?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't either.
Okay. So Karen, what I'll do is I will contact her tomorrow and ask her when maybe we can get together, probably all four of us maybe here at City Hall and sit down and just chat with her and see what maybe we can help her with and what her concerns are and maybe give her some ideas, so just let you know. Okay. Okay, item, okay, item number five, consent agenda approval. Item 5A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of August 18th, 2020. Item B, approval of the bills, $1,301,713.76. Item C, approval of payroll, August 22nd, 2020 through September the 4th, 2020, in the amount of $355,028.15. Could I have a motion please?
移到
Second?
移
Could you call a vote please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego? Yes. Yes. Drew?
Yes?
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. Item six, public hearings, we have none. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business, 8/8. Consideration of bid results for O2-2020 Noah's Ark interior finish. Could I have a motion please?
移到
Second?
Discussion?
Discussion. Mr. Beach, are you on?
Yes Mayor, I'm here.
Do you want to give us a rundown on the bid results?
Certainly, thank you. Mayor Members of Council, Tom Beach, Public Works Director. We opened bids, we can go today for this project. We did have three bidders and bids were fairly close as bidding goes in these days. Schultz Construction, as you have in your pack, at $1,412.8. HW Houston was second at $1,173,999. And Lightcon was third at $1,375,224. And these bids were for the interior finish, completes the interior structure of the tenant buildout at the Noah's Ark building out on East Main by the power plant.
Okay. Let's go to council's questions, Ms. Grego?
I have no questions, I just have a comment. This council that's seated here now inherited this project midstream and it wasn't handled correctly, or it wasn't handled the way it should have been from the get-go, so we're having to do something backwards. I understand that all of you think that this is a lot of money and it is, but by contract, we have to keep, animal safety is a priority in this community. I suggest that if we follow through with this, the deficit of about $154,000 taken out of our capital improvement line items instead of going into the rainy day fund for marijuana. The only thing I have.
Mike, do you have a response to that, is that doable from the capital improvements, is that a recommendation that you have or what's your thoughts?
Mayor, because of the timing and we're coming up on next year's budget, we can't budget the remainder of the deficit into next year's budget for council approval. There's also the option of going to third quarter and fourth quarter marijuana funds, but yeah, we, as far into this project we need to complete as far as to do.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
I think that's a good idea of what Councilwoman Grego suggested, I just have one question on the bids, there's nothing under Item 15, cabinetry, countertops, sinks and faucets for any of the bidders, and I'm just wondering, are we not doing that or why is that not even included in the bid?
I think I can answer that. I think, well, I know Noah's in the process of writing grants for the interior furniture. I don't know if that's included, the one that you. Yeah, yeah, Noah's is going to take care of it, I have Debbie Anderson with me, she wanted to listen to the conversation. She doesn't have good internet at her house, so I thought if you wanted to ask her questions, she's here.
Okay, that's the only question that I have.
Yeah, they're going to take care of that.
Mr. Schuh?
When we were doing this, isn't Noah's Ark contributing some money to this too for the building front home?
Yes sir, they are contributing approximately $340,000, I'll give you the exact figure here in just a second. Little over $340,000.
That's over the bid of, that still makes us short from our $850,000?
Well, the $850 include the money that they were putting in.
Oh okay, I was just trying to get that clarified.
Right, I may. Noah's Ark was donating, providing $324,524. And then the city had $327, almost $328, and then council in the last couple meetings ago approved marijuana expenditures for the second quarter for another $200,000, which brought us to the $850 figure.
That's fine, I was just kind of curious how that worked and yeah, I'd rather take it out of the marijuana money, but whatever could work for us might would be fine with me. Capital improvement, have we used all that money in there or is it, are this going to be budgeted on next year's budget?
We have projects identified in the CIP budget every year, some of whom get completed within the year, others roll over into the next year and if we were going to use CIP, we would budget for this shortfall in next year's budget. But yeah, the CIP money, the one sales tax that voters approved, it's approximately $2 million per year that we get from that, so.
I mean, my only question was, is that money being used now for other things?
There is money available.
Oh okay, that's fine, of course. Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. DeBono?
No Mr. Mayor, not at this time sir.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no further questions.
Okay. The question I have, I guess this would be for Mike. You know, if we were to appropriate the money in next year's budget, if we approve this tonight and we give the order to Schultz Construction to proceed, when will they mobilize and when do they anticipate completion? And if their completion time is before the first of the year and the money is allocated into 2021, how is that going to work?
So Mayor, if approved tonight, contractor has 14 days to get agreements and bonds in place, that puts you to mid-October, probably starting construction should also be published in place on the 21st of September. I don't recall in Tom's answer how many days we gave them to complete this, but I don't think they'll be completing in two months. So, to answer your question, we could either use the third or fourth quarter marijuana funds or we could possibly budget it in next year's budget.
Okay. The next question I have is, what about all the interior, the kennels and all that stuff, is that Noah's Ark, do they already have those or what? I don't want to see them come back and say we need another, you know, $100,000 for kennels and all this other stuff, so what are we looking at? Mr. Beach, can you give us an explanation?
The kennels in that are on the Noah's Ark group. Part of the problem is we're trying to negotiate with them a long-term lease agreement for the building so they can apply for grants that have these infrastructures available for them to reduce costs. We're working on that with our lawyer, Mr. Townsend, as well as Steve Thomas, the lawyer for Noah's Ark. And that's currently underway, as soon as we can get that in place, then they will open up a large window for them to apply for these grants and get this material.
Okay.
There's not.
Okay, and you know, Ms. Anderson is there with Ms. Grego. And my current concern that I have is how assured do they, or what kind of feeling do they have that they would get these bids to be able to cover those other expenses so that they will not have to come back to us? And do they know what that cost is going to be that they're going, what kind of amount or what amount of a grant that they are going to be applying for?
Yes. Chief, I mean, go ahead.
Mayor, we have some Debbie Anderson. We have approximately some fund space for the kennels, but we could not, we didn't want to order them before applying for grants because we didn't want to pay for them ahead of time. We are going to be doing some capital campaign as soon as our contract is in place to cover anything else that we'll need for that. And we will also have volunteers to build front desk and do landscaping and whatever else we need to do.
Okay. Can you answer me though the question of what kind of additional funding are you going to be needing to cover those costs?
Some kennels will be approximately $60,000.
Okay.
And we do have most of that space.
Okay.
I'm not sure what, furnishings will cause, we will use what we have until we can afford to replace that.
Okay. Well, like I said, the big thing is I just don't want a big surprise on the back end here to say, okay, now we need another bunch of money. So that's a concern that I have. And Mr. Beach, you know, I looked over the pro forma that was given to us and something that, and it's not a big dollar amount in there, but nevertheless it is in there, and they have a $14.5,000 for a stained floor. And one thing I've always recognized is that stained floors do not hold up very well over a period of time, especially, I would say especially in a facility like that, you know, where there's going to be, you know, dogs and cats and other animals around with urine and the amount of cleaning that takes place. So I was a little, just a question, was that a question in your mind that maybe instead of just a clear finish would have been better than a stained floor?
We have talked about that here, considered it, stained would only be in the public use areas, it would not be the kennels or the cabins or anything like that, but it's something we can certainly look at and I'm sure that Schultz Construction would be more willing to negotiate with us to let it or everyone to do it.
Yeah, I just brought that, I just thought, and I looked at the prime and the paint at $30,000, that's pretty high, pretty pricey. I'm not sure how many square feet that building is for the type of paint that it'll take, so. Anyway, I'm sure you'll be working on it, so thank you for the information. Are there any other questions from council?
I don't have any questions, I have, um, state that. I understand him correctly, when we first started talking about this, we, I'm sorry, I'm giving feedback for Debbie's point, I apologize. When we first started talking about this, when we first started with negotiations with Noah's Ark, this is just to help with trying to figure out how we're going to finance this. But I do believe that Noah's Ark did agree to using their $340,000 first at the very beginning of the project and then the city money would come after. So if that helps staff to understand where we're going to go with the financing, I just thought I'd bring it up if anybody forgot it.
Okay, any other questions from council? Not, call a vote please.
This is for approval of the bid.
Of the bid?
Construction and the money will come from 2021, have all proven.
That is correct.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Hoboken?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Gregor?
Yes. On to item 8AIB, which is Resolution supporting the placement of our work within Colorado Department of Transportation, Colorado Department of Transportation facilities. Could I have a motion please?
移到
Second?
移
Mr. Beach, I believe that's in your wheelhouse as well, do you want to give us an explanation there please?
Very briefly Mayor, certainly, this is Tom Beach once again, Public Works, Mayor Members of Council. This resolution is being requested by the Colorado Department of Transportation to show your support for the installation of the horse statue, art piece that you've seen before, the metallic horse that would be installed at the Roundabout at Nevada and University like it says in the referral. We have to have this, just to keep moving forward, the blue artwork that is there now will be moved over to Space Create? That's pretty much it.
Okay.
Answer questions.
Ms. Grego, do you have any questions?
No, no I don't, I just want, well, I have one, where is it going to be at Space Create? Where is that room, where down there, inside the building or out?
My original, what I've been told is right at the entrance in the front on Main Street there where the little alcove is with the garage somewhere in that area.
Okay.
That subject is changed too, so.
Okay, no, I have no, no questions.
Ms. Ogletree?
I don't know, the only way I've seen this sculpture was on Facebook, but I think it's breathtaking. It is an extraordinary piece and I think it's really going to have a nice setting there at the Roundabout, but it is really an amazing sculpture. We're fortunate to have it.
Mr. Schuh?
No, no question to.
Mr. DeBono?
Can you clarify a little bit about the horse, is there a possibility that it could be vandalized or damaged? What are the points of probability at the Roundabout?
Well, I.
So, this is, I would interject, it is in the middle of the Roundabout. Nobody to date has vandalized, that I know of, the blue sculpture thing. It is going to be placed up on the, on that pedestal and the support raises it up higher. And there's, there's no guarantees on vandalism, but you know, we will, we will monitor.
Do we have cameras there?
We have, we do have a camera in the location. It's on the Walton Center, so.
Okay.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no questions or comments, thank you.
The only comment that I have is, it's kind of a neat exchange because you know, now that we have the Space Create project, I think that piece of artwork that's there would be, would be nice to have a piece of art like that right there in the Space Create project. So it's a good exchange, so I'm looking forward to seeing that done. Do we have a timeframe, Mr. Beach, as to when we may be doing all this or what's the status of that?
If I may, if I may, we are working with CDOT, so I don't want to put any time constraints on this, it's taken us forever to get this far with it. So it may be, it could be a month or so, it could be a couple, it could be several months.
Okay, all right, that's understandable, working with CDOT. Okay. CDOT's second of the railroad, working with them. That's a whole different issue. Anyhow, there's no other questions from council, call a vote please?
Tom?
Yes.
Gregor?
Yes.
Hoboken? Yes. Drew?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Please go.
Yes. On to item nine, council reports, Ms. Grego?
I don't have anything to report, I would like to suggest something to council and whatever council decides, I'll go with it, but seems like we've been really overworking staff lately with all these work sessions we've been having plus our regular meetings. And I'm wondering if staff, if council would be agreeable to foregoing a work session next week, if it's possible, just to give staff a little breather to try and catch up. There's so many things going on and I mean, you can tell just a short meeting like this, the preparation that it takes, so. I just bring that as a suggestion and.
Mike?
You know, I have no further comments.
Mike, do we have anything on tap that's really, that we really have to get done, that maybe we can't push off a work session for, you know, next time around?
Nothing that can't wait right now, Mayor, I mean. I mean, uh, Monday is Labor Day, so that would mean we'd have to move, uh, work session to Tuesday. I appreciate Ms. Gregel's, uh, tenement there. We could use a break and, and.
Okay.
Give us time to breathe and get better prepared for council, so.
Anyway, uh, you know, as, as you guys give your reports, if you want to give your yea or a nay, uh, as we go along. So, uh, Ms. Ogletree, here?
That suggestion is, is fine with me. Um, the only thing I wanted to report on was that, uh, Common's Business Plan in the Common's Space Create Business Development Program, the Oversight Board is working hard on. And I, as I understand it, I think it's going to be ready to present something to us in this month. But they're doing a good job with that. And then I, I wanted to reiterate some of the comments that happened after we had our community forum on the House of House of Spaces. I thought that went very, very well. I, I thought it was an amazingly broad, um, set of opinions and thoughts that we got to hear. And I, I really thought it was time well, where it's spent, that we spent that time well. I still have people reaching out to me, and I don't know if any of you all have, but I still have people reaching out to me for additional comments. So I, I feel like by the time we make this decision, it will be very well, um, based in an understanding of what our community wants and needs.
Okay. Mr. Shu?
No, I have nothing at this time to report, thank you.
Are you, are you okay with moving, uh?
Oh, yes, at that time.
Mr. DeBono?
Yes, I'm fine with that, and I have a couple things to report, Mr. Mayor. I, I was invited to sit in on a union city meeting, uh, last Tuesday at this time at the Southside Park. Uh, there were several department heads there. And I had a question, maybe this is a Les question, or Mike, or, or Mr. Mayor. When, when city contracts are up for negotiations, uh, Les, maybe, what's the protocol for a city official slash council member to be part of the negotiation process?
I'm glad you asked, Councilman DeBono. It's not, and I hope I'm not coming across too terribly loud and having your volume issues, but it's not appropriate to have a council member involved in contract negotiations. We certainly, you, if we have an executive session, you can task us, you can tell us what to do, even if we don't have an executive session. If we talk about contract negotiations in an open meeting, generally that would be a, an executive session subject. But it's for staff to do and for us to do the discussions and the negotiations regarding, um, contracts and the negotiations moving up to the height. I appreciate the question. Certainly if Mike or anyone has anything to, to add, but.
So that's, that's. Les, does the city have a mediator?
Um, do we have a mediator? No, we don't have a, a designated mediator. Many, many municipal contracts call for, uh, a, a mediator in the event of a dispute on a contract. And some contracts will say, uh, who the mediators can be, the mediator or mediators can be. But you generally don't have a pre-designated mediator because that kind of suggests that either it's someone, if we want, like, if we had a mediator, the clear indication is that they would be more in our favor than they would anybody else. So it, the, the parties agree on a mediator in the event of a dispute. But once you're in a contract, and, and the dispute arises.
Okay. Uh, Mr. DeBono, another thing too, like I said, it would, it's probably not a good idea that, uh, you know, any council person gets involved in a situation like that because if it comes down to a vote of some kind or, uh, it could put you in a very precarious situation. So I would recommend that, uh, you know, if they invite you again, just to say, uh, no at this time. Okay? Let the, let staff handle those negotiations.
Okay, well, nothing was actually said. I mean, I think negotiations process is going to be later on, uh, towards the end of the year for next year.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, that's fine. I, I, okay, I understand that.
Uh, Mr. Valentine?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, um, well, hopefully you can hear me. My video just went down. But, uh, just for, uh, Mr. DeBono's clarification, every year the union comes forward and, uh, meets with the city manager and, uh, our human resource director. They put forth their requests. We put forth our, you know, over the years, something's come up. Administration puts theirs on the table. We hash it out. There are monetary, uh, requests, um, and, uh, you know, we, we, we leave the, the union with, okay, we'll, we'll have to look at that as we negotiate and we'll come forward to council with their requests. You know, they could ask for ten percent raise. And of course, budget doesn't allow it, so we'll come forth and we'll work back and forth. And, um, we, we do have an open negotiation, so just, just so you know.
Okay. And, uh, I, I interviewed Phil Weiser, the Attorney General here in Colorado, and he was, really applauded the allocation of the funding for TSJC. TSJC, he said he loves the area of Southern Colorado and he worked pretty hard for all three community colleges, Otero, Lamar, and, uh, as well as Trinette State.
Okay. Uh, that's it. Mr. Williamson?
I have no comments at this time. I, uh, don't, uh, I think it's a good idea to defer next week for the session.
Okay. On to my, some, that's me. Uh, I'm fine with, uh, foregoing the work session, uh, next week. And that was a good suggestion, Ms. Gregel. Thank you for that. From my end, like I said, uh, just the Tourism Board. I attended their last meeting and, uh, they're moving forward, uh, trying to contain costs like I mentioned the last time. And they're working hard to try to get things in line for next year. Uh, also been online, just like with Mr. Valentine, listening to the COVID-19 reports from the Health Department. And of course, everybody knows that, I think we're up to, what, twenty now that we have? And yesterday, uh, Rick Garcia, uh, Chantal and Tara were down from Dole and they wanted to tour the, uh, uh, Space Create project because, of course, they helped fund quite a bit of that. And, uh, also the, the Fox Theater because we are, you know, we have a grant in or we're going to have grants in with them. Uh, so he just wanted to see what the projects were like and where they stood. And it was good to see that, uh, there was, uh, some pretty good activity. I, I think from what I understand that Main Street, uh, I think they've rented the majority of the, of the rooms already, of the apartments. And, uh, the, uh, the other project on Elm Street is moving on and, uh, probably in another month or so, they'll be ready to turn that over to start renting rooms, uh, from what I gather. Also, uh, attended the meeting with the Southwest Chief. The Tiger Nine Grant that was approved some time back, uh, that is part of, for New Mexico. Uh, they've given the authorization to proceed. Implementation is going to be in, uh, around November timeframe. Amtrak also, uh, has asked for ten billion dollars, uh, the 2020, uh, but from the, from the feds. It seems like the new, uh, CEO that we have for Amtrak is more amenable to working with him. And he's open to, uh, doing different things for the Southwest Chief and the Front Range Passenger Rail. If they receive that money, it will allow, it sounds like, the Southwest Chief project to move forward, uh, a little quicker. Uh, they're also waiting for the reassurance authorization of the transportation bill. And that's five billion dollars for a period of five years, four, four years, excuse me. Uh, and that's a grant program from the feds. And of course, that will be some of that money that, uh, we will be applying for some of that money to help us, uh, with the Southwest Chief as well. So things are moving along. It's kind of nice to see someone, um, working with us. The big issue, of course, is they're still talking about the three-day, uh, cutting back the three days. I forget exactly when that's to start. And, um, it's not going to be a forever deal. That was going to be my concern, is that, that's been my concern, is that they would continue on, but they say that once this COVID-19, uh, you know, is behind us, that, that they will be able to continue with the, uh, seven-day, uh, passenger rail with Amtrak. So, uh, that's all. I, by the way, I just wanted to mention, uh, I've also received numerous calls after the forum. I've gotten emails. I'm not going to say what way right now, but just let you know. I've probably had fifteen additional calls, uh, from that timeframe. With that being said, we'll move on to, uh, Mr. Valentine, your report?
Uh, Mayor, thank you. The only thing I really have to report is just, uh, a reminder that we are having, um, a community forum this Thursday, September third at 5:00 P.M. to discuss, uh, the Santa Fe Trail project. The contractor has everything in order and they want to start construction September eighth. So we want to have a bit of a community forum to let people know, uh, the project, what's happening, detours that, uh, will be out there. And most of all, for them to be patient with us as we improve our infrastructure. Get meet with the contractor and depending on the availability of asphalt and the weather, we may have to split the project up, part of it this year and then part in the spring.
Ouch.
Just due to the asphalt plants closing down. But, uh, September third, five, five P.M., uh, emails have went, went out, uh, noticing the paper. If you need information for the, the go-to meeting, of course, it will be virtual. You can call City Hall and we'll get that to you. Mayor, that's all I have.
Well, what you might do is, what you might do is just send, uh, send that information out to council and that way anybody that wants to participate, they can. Uh, someone have a comment?
Can you do, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Shu.
Okay. Yeah, uh, Mike, when you said they might have to split the project up, would you explain how they're going to split that up? Are they going to do the walks one way and the road one way? I mean, how is that going to tie in with, uh, opening that up and, and not timing it up so bad?
Sure, so, um, they're, they're talking about two phases. Up top, uh, from Adams to Washington is fairly flat there. They can tear all that up. They can replace the gas line in that section. They could build the handicap corners up at Adams and, and, uh, Santa Fe Trail. And then they would stop and there would just be a transition from there. As you continue, um, north and go around that curve, we're taking out quite a bit of that super elevated curve that sucks everybody down into the, you know, during the snowstorm, into that curve. If we tear that out, that's a lot of dirt work. If we tear that out first, we may not be, uh, complete and asphalt plants would shut down. So, uh, it would be mud throughout, uh, throughout the winter and we don't want that. So the transition would be from new pavement and a, a patch back into the old pavement around that curve until, um, so they'll, they'll do the section from Adam and they'll do all the curved, other sidewalks required down to a certain point. They may be able to do some of the sidewalks, the other curves that are stained around that curve. It all depends on the weather. I don't know if that helped you?
Yeah, you did. I just, I was just kind of curious how you were going to do that.
Okay.
Sure.
Anything else, Mr. Valentine?
Nothing else, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Downs?
Mayor, thank you. I don't have anything to report on, council members, but I do want to say that in a city staff popularity poll, Councilman Gregor was trending very hot. Popularity, it's, no, so thank you for this suggestion, council.
That was good.
I actually gave, I gave her that idea.
Was ever.
Valuable function, you should give a fun discussion, that's all I have.
Okay. Who's ever thought that was? That was a, that was a good thought, good, no. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn, please.
Submissed.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Gregor?
Yes.
Alwesley?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you and, uh, good night and everyone have a safe weekend and, uh, enjoy the, uh, Labor Day as best as we can and, uh.
You also, Phil.
Yes.
Okay.
Indeed, indeed, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Bye.